Can you do that again in one second? Right now go, it was loading.
Alright.
Alright, we're ready.
Did you second that Eric?
I did, but do we need to redo it?
Yeah.
Do it, yeah. Make a motion to accept the minutes for six seventeen twenty-four as amended.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Hi. Eric Haji.
That uh, that matters explosive. Alright. Why don't we move on uh, to Fred Labham's eighty-one P. For, oh here he is.
Yep, and Damon got back to me, he's probably not making.
Okay. Jack, you'll have to work with Damon on um, getting him reviewing the tape from tonight's meeting.
Yep.
For the public hearings.
And get it certified by the clerk, yep.
Yep, alright.
Want the originals?
Yeah, we're waiting on you my friend.
Okay. Those are not two originals, these are the first. Sure.
Okay. Alright.
That's the way I get away from the office.
Right up there.
Okay.
Do we sign the wins?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, this uh,
Hold on, let me just one second.
Alright.
Do we have all the forms? Take the name. And stamps. And do we have a check? Alright. Important matters taken care of. They got three building lots, one, two, and three.
Yes, this uh, this was a zoning board of appeals variance that was granted back in two thousand twelve. And we've had, there are property line issues that have all been resolved. This eighty-one P will allow the development to go forward and lots to be sold. Uh, because we've defined the entire.
Why don't you walk us through it, I'm looking at lot one, two, and three here. Well, lot one, three anyways.
Okay.
Fred, I think, Fred, I think it'd be good if you showed the board where the frontage is for each lot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Up at the screen.
Wherever you want.
Is that what you usually do Bill?
Oh, you can do it however you want Fred, if you're not comfortable. You're comfortable standing?
Yep.
Where is lot three?
Lot three.
I mean lot two.
Lot three's here, lot one here, lot two over here. So it's one, two, and three.
Okay.
Lot two, that's frontage on Vincent.
You already have a variance for that?
Yeah, there is no frontage variance here, we have, we have the required frontage for lot two, lot one, and lot three. So we have all frontages, this was, this was.
Where's the frontage for lot two?
Right.
And that's over two hundred feet?
Oh. Yes.
It has a two hundred feet.
No, that's here, as long as they got enough up. It's their problem to cross the creek.
Both these have the frontage on the other sheet.
Spring look, wow. Hi.
Okay, lot one. These symbols here indicate that the ownership on each side of the line is the same.
Okay.
Okay, so this goes with this, all of it goes with this, this is one continuous piece.
It's contiguous lot.
But it has some down. You can see what the other lot.
Yeah.
Okay. So the frontage is here. And I talked about it with Gene, we got approval, variance was for a common driveway that came out on Butler Road.
Common driveway for which lot?
All three lots.
All three.
Oh, okay.
So we, we have the ability to have three very extremely long driveways.
And that's uh,
It was unneeded if we had a comment for that.
That's uh, just to save crossing wetlands, I assume?
Crossing wetlands, uh, just general.
So how are you gonna get from there all the way over to lot three?
Yeah, you have.
Are you coming in off Inman?
You have a plan of the original variance?
Um, only if Dylan has it.
So we don't have any. Oh yeah.
I got you.
This was the original variance plan.
Alright.
And here's frontage number one, actually lot two. Frontage for number one is down here, existing frontage, frontage for number three is down here.
So you're not gonna go, come into lot three from Inman Hill?
Uh, no. No need, because the common driveway comes in here, there's a cul-de-sac right here, and another common driveway comes off, dumps off to lot two, continues onto lot three. So all three will have their access from that one location.
So you're gonna come in to one, lot one? These are things like that.
Right here, the lines are on the plan, they're just not showing.
Right, this was Gannett's property, you sold it to Mike Jones?
Uh, Gannett, yes.
Mike Jones owns it now, right?
Yes.
Okay, now I know where you're talking. Now I understand.
Yeah, I know where this is, I, I, I watched this meeting months before someone was talking to me about it. Years ago.
The variances were for access.
Yeah.
Allow access and therefore reduce.
I'm just wondering why, because it seems to be a lot of wetland.
Well, there is, that's.
Why are you taking that, well, why are you taking that long driveway, crossing over to lot three instead of coming in off Inman Hill, which has nowhere?
First of all, we have to cross here, we have to cross here, this is the lot.
Inman Hill doesn't go there.
Inman Hill is up here.
That's a, that's paper road.
Right, uh, well, that's.
Inman Hill doesn't, doesn't contact that land.
Right here.
Oh, Inman Hill doesn't touch the land, so that's uh, an abandoned piece of the road?
This, this area up here was abandoned, we do have evidence that old Tomac, which is where it used to be.
Right.
Instead of Inman Hill, uh, it was but Tomac, and it was Tomac. Uh, that was discontinued in April nineteen fifteen.
Right.
That's, that's below the fields.
Yeah, so that's private room?
Uh, it is private ownership, it.
Okay, I, I can't wait.
The town just, just continues, it doesn't undo many easements.
Right.
People may have.
Yeah, it'd be down probably well, it doesn't reach that.
That's a, that's through the Pioneer Hill subdivision.
This is the back, the other side of Butler, to the other side of Butler.
Yeah, this is uh, here, it's true.
Yeah. Alright. Does anybody have any further questions, any confusion?
Bill, can I say, can I say something?
Go ahead, go ahead Jim.
Just for maybe the newer members and for, um, I know Bill knows this and Barry. But with a eighty-one P, if you have lot frontage and you have lot area, the board's compelled to approve it and subdivide it. That does not mean they can get a building permit, that's between them and the building commissioner and the conservation commission.
Yeah, they still, they still have to deal with the border health and conservation.
And the border health, that's right.
Yeah, they still need to go to the proper channels before they can get a building.
Right.
All we're doing is, uh, approval not required means as long as it meets maintenance, uh, dimensional and zoning requirements, the board is, is, uh, has to approve. And since they've already received a relief from the ZBA, um, there's no, there's no reason why this shouldn't be.
Right.
Uh, so when you're ready for a motion.
I'll make your motion.
Make a motion to accept the eighty-one P for ten Butler Road, fourteen Butler Road, seventy-six.
Actually, I like Dylan's version of what the, what the.
Endorsed.
Endorsed.
Endorsed, yeah. A second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Eric Haji.
Alright, um, Eric, if you would like, uh, you, oh, well, you, you've got COVID, we'll just, we'll send the uh, the MyLine stuff out without your signature, we don't want you coming in and giving anybody the COVIDs.
Well, I'm home.
But you'll be noted in the minutes, but.
Uh, we only need three signatures, so.
Yeah, I know.
Would I be able to pick up the plans tomorrow?
Um.
At the office? Uh, there's, it's a two-sheet plan, so there's four sets other than the MyLine.
Alright, um. Alright, we'll just sign the MyLine, the forms. How do I do with the forms? If I put them back there?
Get the forms back there Bill.
Alright, let's get those here. Alright. Uh, for a uh, for we sign, was there any questions in the community? Any questions on this? Oh, there is, I do have a question. Um, as far as the uh, the combined driveway, have you worked out with fire department? We want the approvals for um, an eighty-one P is vital access.
Uh.
Probably have to make a turn.
Uh, we do have a, we have a cul-de-sac. Turn around. Yep.
And just make sure that the fire department.
Okay, I'll, I'll give them a copy of the original ZBA plan, it shows everything. So. Okay.
Neil, we didn't think of this, you stamping everything like years ago. Alex, we get, you, you know, you're uh, you're heading out the door and all of a sudden we discover that we can just have you stamp the plans. Oh, alright.
So you don't need me anymore?
No, you're all, you're all set. Pick them up tomorrow.
Yes, thank you.
Oh, I didn't sign the form, perhaps. Let's walk for person. Alright, why don't we get this other eighty-one P out of the way and then we move on? Uh, John and I, or DNL Design Group here?
Yes. I MyLins, after you, yeah, when you get inside, I'll put them up there for the guys. He's at one, by seven, if you want to hear them.
Yep.
You, you're Mike. Yeah, my guys, watch. Nice to see you.
Are those uh, ones to this?
Yes.
Over.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you. Your form A is a little contradictory. But, take it as esteemed. So the first page you say in uh, you meet the two hundred foot reclining on Millville Street, then you're telling me on the backside that you've received a various decision granting a reduction in frontage. Alright, let's take a look at what you got going on here.
Alright. Okay, so we have that plan up there and I also have a colored plan here, if, if you want me to go through the colored plan here, just to go through the process.
Yeah, why don't you do it up there? Dylan, you can follow along pointing out areas, it'll be easier for us as soon as I move this out of the way, easier for us.
Hey.
I'm turning it a little bit so if anybody's interested, um, they can also see it, that's good, right? I'm sure these guys don't care, so.
Yeah.
I'm just worried about these folks over.
Yeah, good evening, my name's Mike Dean with DNL Design Group, here representing Mike Salvador, the owner of the property. Uh, some of the board members may be familiar with this property, I think it has quite a bit of a history, probably over ten years, special permits, things of that nature. Uh, ZBA decisions. Approvals for horse, uh, horse arenas, things of that nature, quite some time ago, so recently, this, this project has been in front of ZBA. Uh, so we're just, once again, we're going through the formality of cleaning up the property lines, uh, following the ZBA granting the relief from the color zone.
So this is a combined driveway also?
Yes, it's similar to what we just discussed, I'll just go through it quickly, so there is, seven acres of land, shown here in the orange. Okay, touches two different areas on Millville Street shown here. This way is towards Millville, back that way is towards town. There is an established, a very well-established existing gravel driveway that accesses the top anyhow. And that was in, in accordance with the previous special permits and things of that nature that were approved, they were working to develop it in that manner.
Yep.
As you had mentioned, there's a common driveway down in this area here, turnaround. And some additional leases for the, for the common driveway.
Yeah, this is uh, the gate of, or.
Yes.
He's got the uh.
That gate's located right here.
Yeah.
Right. So this petition was in front of ZBA, they granted the relief for the three lots on frontage and width on all three lots, lot one being shaped here. Which is.
What is that uh?
Twenty-one acres.
Not that it matters, but what is that? What, on, on that side of the property, what is that access? Is that just right away, or?
Yeah, that's just the way that the parcel had been subdivided previously and shaped up, and there's a slender, slender section of the pot, that's a section pot. A slender section of the parcel that was.
Hi.
Over the years, but that is the frontage for lot one, but therefore, that's why the common driveway is created. So there's lot one, twenty-one acres, lot two in the middle in the yellow.
Yeah, and access is along that frontage of lot one, right?
Excuse me?
You're not accessing.
Correct.
Right, that's right. It's just, because it doesn't look wide enough.
Lot two, it's twelve acres, lot three, thirty-three, one sixty, so access down to this common drive, as you can see that turn on the area there. And this, this is the access to the other two lots. Uh, the relief was granted, frontage width like I had mentioned, so this is basically the formality of cleaning up and making the property lines efficient.
Yeah, this one's not part of the ownership.
And this, and this comprises the frontage.
Yeah, this, this comprises one and two, or, yeah, one and two, and this comprises three, or lot one, actually, this comprises two and three.
Three, I think if that's what your question is, two and three is, two and three is split down here, but the common driveway is, and then lot one.
Um, what technical width do we have on that? I can't see it on my.
Existing width, and uh, that was all submitted to the plan, uh, to the ZBA to show that the adequate width was going to be provided, eighteen, and then with the shoulders being up past twenty-two feet wide.
Okay.
That was all submitted through the ZBA.
Okay. I've been on this property, I know it's a large piece of property and uh, you know, they're all large acreage. Once again, with ZBA relief and all other residential requirements, my only question would be whether eighteen feet's enough for vital access? Do you have anything from the fire department or anything that?
I believe Mike had some communication with them through the ZBA, but we returned and looked back around with, with uh, the fire chief before building permits and things of that nature.
Jack, any input on that?
Yeah, can I ask a question first, could you, Dylan, could you go back to the main um, scroll, you know, zoom out, yep. Could you talk a little bit to the board about the easements? I, I, I got them now, you're, you're protecting the easements for lot one and two as they go through this other lot. So that it's in perpetuity, I assume that's what these are.
Uh, yes, and it's also, it's part of the approval that all the language for the common driveway has to be approved by the uh, town council or whoever the town uses for town council. So that still has to be submitted and approved by, by town council, and that's buried in the uh, the permit from ZBA, but yes, it would be in perpetuity, yes.
Yeah. I honestly, I honestly, you know, not to hold you up, but I honestly would like you to go back to the fire department and have them tell me that that's adequate vital access. Because that is a requirement of an eighty-one P.
Yeah, yeah, and Bill, this is my second comment, I, I got this, I got, I got what ZBA did, whether I like it or not, it doesn't matter. But it's counterintuitive to the vital access question, and with eighty-one Ps, yes, you can have, if, provided you get relief from ZBA, certain um, uh, accommodations, if you will, but vital access still has to be there, and I guess, and I haven't.
My concern is eighteen feet enough for a fire truck.
And I haven't seen, Bill, the, the ZBA decision to see if they took that under consideration. And if they did, that really puts the planning board in a, stuck in the middle, so to speak, and if they didn't, then I think it does lay on you. And I don't know the answer.
So to answer the question in terms of if the ZBA took that under the advisement, this is the ZBA plan that was submitted? Right up in this area here is a detail of the access. The detail of the access in which there are a couple of areas that we even widened it. And there's a couple of easements associated with this plan to make sure that's adequate access, I think.
And, and can I ask you?
The owner drives eighteen wheels up and down this, there's adequate access, we believe, and it was part of the submittal, so at least ZBA saw the information.
Yeah, that answers my first question, so the access was determined through the.
Did they determine, yeah, did they determine to, in their discussion? Was there any discussion about vital access?
I have no idea.
You know that's a requirement of eighty-one P.
Right. I can't, I don't have the minutes of the meeting, I know this was submitted, we designed this, we have the cross-section, we talked about adequate access, how the established gravel driveway. Then we presented it, and there were no issues in this grant.
Uh, can I ask you when?
While looping back with the, with the, with the fire, I don't, I don't think Mike would have a problem looping back and getting a letter from the fire.
Yeah, I know, I, I have no question Mike wouldn't mind, I just, to be able to present this eighty-one P as, you know, I would hate to see that we approve something. And then I've got the fire department coming back to me saying, I can't get a fire truck down that road, that driveway.
Yeah.
You know, that would be a problem. It'd be a problem for me, not you.
Yeah.
You got the approval.
Yeah, no, no, I don't want that either, but like, I mean, the guy owns a construction company, he's up and down there with eighteen wheelers.
Yeah.
I think there's adequate access.
How do you feel about a contingency?
Can you come back, we're gonna set a meeting for uh, second week of August, so can you come back, second week of August, is Mike hired up for this, or is uh?
He needs to move things along, but. It is an A and R, it's been submitted, I mean, there are timelines associated.
There are, but certainly uh.
So can we do a contingent upon the lot?
I think. Yeah, I guess we could prove a contingent upon you deliver a letter back to us. From the fire department, saying that they, they approved the vital access.
But Bill, Bill, there's a couple moving parts here.
Yeah.
Um, the gentleman's correct, you only got twenty-one days to act.
That's why I'm saying.
And you can never make it to August meeting within that timeline. You can't condition an eighty-one P. So, I don't know, you could, I don't know where you're gonna go with this.
Yeah, thank you.
Unless you have a very quick special meeting after, in a week or something like that.
We could do an emergency meeting. Yeah, I, I'd feel more comfortable, yeah, I'd feel more comfortable with uh.
You can have a one agenda meeting, it'll take five minutes. Maybe.
Yeah, it's next Monday, Jack and I will be there, right?
I'm on vaca, I'm leaving on vacation, so I'm not being anywhere.
I work for three towns, I, Millville, so I won't be here.
Um, when are you, and then?
Every other week, but Millville has a meeting next Monday, so you'd have to have somebody else.
We don't have anybody else.
Well, whoever can use this. Who can hit record?
Trust me, I.
Do you have to have it on a Monday night? You can have it, you can have it Monday afternoon, and, or Tuesday afternoon, it doesn't have to, time is up to you.
Wow, like some of these people were.
Yeah.
You can do that, but we can change the night, I mean, the night's not a big deal.
I think that, that, I, I think you'd feel better if you could do something quick next week, whenever you can get three members there.
Is there a night you're available next week?
Tuesday's fine.
Tuesday?
Having surgery Tuesday.
Having surgery Tuesday.
Well.
How about we do this, um?
Mike's here also, the, the proponent, I didn't know he was.
Yeah.
So, uh, Mike's over the property, so previous, this parcel had a special permit for an equestrian facility.
Right.
Which had, which was scrutinized for safe, uh, access, and it was deemed at that time, previous fire chief. That eighteen feet was adequate for a safe passage. Their main concern was the turnaround portions, not so much the width, the width, eighteen was fine, it's the turnarounds. So we provided, uh, uh, turnaround accessibility as well here. In addition, this has, uh, I don't know if, are we showing fire protection?
I know.
So there will be fire protection for each house out of a pond draft tube on this site.
Okay.
And in the past eighteen, uh, feet of travelway was deemed safe. Access for other common drives that, that had set up precedent. My previous, uh, application was a greater use, greater traffic flow.
Right.
Just traffic study.
I remember, uh, I remember, uh.
So this is a lesser, lesser use.
Well, does anyone have any input or?
I'm good with it.
You're good with it? All right. Dave?
Anybody else?
All right, I'll need a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the eighty-one P for one sixty-one Millville Street.
All those, oh, I need a second, first of all.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Pass this. But do me a favor, discuss this with the fire department.
Yeah, yep. You're willing, is that right, Mike?
I'm taking your word, Mike. All right. What is it?
Twelve point nine feet.
Oh, all right. Glad you're here tonight. It's not like I run around with a tape measure measuring fire trucks, so. So. Yeah, we've signed the mylas on the floor, man, and then we can move on. Get to these, uh, other important items.
Guys, there's a number of paper copies to the right, the mylar is the one drawing five is to the left.
Um, in that, in that stack right in front of Bill.
This is just a submittal.
Yeah.
Yeah, open that, you got a copy for me?
Um, there's eight copies. I can bring every, I can get.
As long as I get one copy of the plans and stormwater.
Yeah, there's two, there's two drainage, all the permits and eight, eight sets of the plans. I can pull them apart, but.
Would you mind pulling about one set of the plans for me?
Not at all.
And, and the one stormwater report while they're signing?
Yep.
And then everything else is gonna go to the.
There's one. We'll pull one apart, fold it.
Okay, uh, no, you don't have to fold it, roll it up, yeah.
She's at the, um, the stage, she'll be right back.
It's the planning board. Hey Dylan or Bill, this is Damon, I'm on the meeting, sorry.
We got you.
I'll get you the PDFs and everything anyways.
I know if I took all the, care all the other crap first, Damon would show up.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm here.
All right.
Oh, that's all, don't worry.
Yeah.
Perfect, so we're gonna move on to, uh. The public hearing, uh, for the site plan for.
Oh, no, 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 you gotta do that.
Oh. Excuse me, Bill, chairman. Um, I'm just, these, this is a submittal for thirty-five K, no presentation, just handing it before.
Yeah, that's fine.
Is that fine? I gave it to.
Fine, we're just gonna set a public hearing, Dave.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, um, you have paper copies of that plan?
Yeah, everything's here, everything's here. Uh, gave a copy to Jeff.
Are you taking off or you're gonna stick around?
No, I'm not, yeah, I wasn't, kinda.
Okay, all right.
If it's okay before.
Well, just, I usually like to have a brief overview, but, um.
Yeah, John, I discussed that with John, and I thought he spoke maybe with Gail, that it was just gonna be a submittal, no presentation.
Okay, well, certainly there doesn't need to be one, we'll address it at the time of the public hearing.
Right, okay, all right.
Sounds good.
Thank you, thanks for your time.
All right. Um, so one North Avenue. Yeah.
Bill, do we need to make a motion for the public hearing for, uh, thirty-five K or does that later?
I, we'll do that after, uh, we'll deal with one North Ave.
Okay.
I, I already called up one North Ave, so we're gonna open the public hearing. Gonna open the public hearing from one North Ave. Um, at this point in time, I'm gonna. What?
Uh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
All right, I'll, uh, turn it over to you, you can, uh.
Yeah, do you need to read the public notice?
Oh, yes, I need the, it's in here, right? It's a public notice, or is it in here? It's not in here. Oh, wait a minute. Hold on. I have a copy if you need one. I got the public notice here. All right. For the record, I will read in the, uh, legal notice for the meeting. Okay, in accordance with MGL chapter forty-eight, section eleven, notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held on Monday, July fifteenth. Twenty twenty-four at six P M in person or virtual in the Men in Town Hall of twenty main street men. Consider a site plan special permit submitted by John Cusick, is that correct? John Cusick. Um, of Bowler Engineering for one North Avenue. Math eight dash one eighty-nine dash one for. Thirty-five hundred and forty square foot bank building with a drive-through window and a fifty-five hundred square foot retail building. All with forty-two parking spaces, loading areas and landscaping. Property is owned by One North Avenue LLC. Uh, of eight Uxbridge Road, Menon. Plans are submitted by Bowler Engineering of thirty-five Turnpike Road, South Bromass. This was advertised in the paper on, uh. I assume it was the Milford Daily News, Milford Daily News on six twenty-eight and seven five. Okay.
Great, good evening, uh, Mr. Chair, rest of members of the planning board. Uh, my name is Doug Troyer, I represent the applicant. Uh, with me tonight is, uh, John Cusick from, uh, Bowler Engineering, who's our, uh, project engineer. We also have Gary McNaughton from Bowman, who's our traffic engineer, and we also have, uh, Asko Solberg from HFA. Who's our architect, uh, Tariq Fahad is also here from the applicant as well. Uh, I. Yeah, sure, absolutely, so, um, I wanted to. It's green.
This is just recording, it doesn't do anything else.
So I'll speak up. Do you mind bringing up the? Uh, that's fine, I'll try and angle myself so they can hear as well, uh. Kinda wanna give you a ten thousand foot view, turn it over to Syl to kinda go through our plans. Uh, this site's located at one North Avenue, it consists of a vacant ninety thousand square foot parcel. Uh, it lies at the corner of North Avenue and Milford Street intersections. Uh, the site is mostly located in a general business. Uh, we also have a portion of the site that's in rural residential. But the project only focuses on the general business aspect of it. Uh, even if we were looking at the rural, we would be able to take advantage of, uh. The bylaw section one point oh three, which will allow us to basically extend up to thirty feet into the rural residential. But for this project, we wanted to keep it solely on the general business district. Uh, as the public notice indicated, we seek to construct a three thousand five hundred and forty square foot bank building with a drive-through window. A fi- a fifty-five hundred square foot retail building with landscape parking and related appearances. Uh, the reason we're before you, these are as of right uses under your zoning bylaw, but because we are looking to. Construct more than one building on the site, we need to seek a special permit. Uh, we are also looking to have a drive-through just for the bank aspect, and we also need a special permit for that. Uh, we're also seeking site plan review and have requested certain waivers. I'll get into the legal aspect of stuff later. I think, uh, what everyone wants to hear is pretty much what, what is this project, what we're looking to do. Uh, we've been fortunate to, um, submit this to peer review for traffic peer review and engineering peer review. Uh, we have gone back and forth with the, uh, the traffic peer review, um, and believe that, uh, we have, um. Satisfied majority, if not all, the concerns in which I'll let Gary get into detail. We just recently received the peer review from Graves last Friday, so we are looking at that. Uh, and will basically be looking to supplement a, uh, a response. We could talk about it briefly.
Be going over his findings.
Yeah, we could talk about that briefly tonight, but, uh, we will be supplementing, uh, with those, but that also, uh, pretty straightforward, fortunately for us. So with that, I wanna turn it over to John and have him kinda go through the, uh, go through the site plans.
Good evening, uh, for the record, John Cusick with Bowler Engineering. Uh, let's see, Doug gave you the, um, the, the high level review, but you can see we're at the, the northeast corner of the, uh, of the intersection. I'm sure you're all familiar with the, uh, with the site, it's just a shade over, over two acres. Uh, it is undeveloped, uh, there was a prior, uh, building there, uh, many years ago, you can see the remnants of the driveway and. Uh, just a small cleared out spot on there. Uh, the one item that is important I wanna call out, you can see on this plan, actually. There's a decent amount of grade change from one side of the site to the, uh, to the next, probably about thirty feet from the top left to the bottom right. Which is a big part of what drove, uh, the design and how we set everything up, just to make sure we're working with those, um, with those grades. So going on to the, the next sheet, the proposed plan, um. What you. What's that?
These are the order.
Yeah, okay, great, uh, actually, if you wanna hit the next, the next plan, then a little better to look at. Yeah, there we go. Um, so we have two buildings proposed on, um, on site, as you heard, the, the bank is the westernmost, uh, structure. And the retail is the eastern most structure, bank is about thirty-five hundred square feet. And the retail structure is about, uh, fifty-five hundred square feet. So based on the prominent location of, of this and the DOT project going on, we've had a couple of conversations early on with DOT. Which is quite helpful, usually they don't wanna talk to you till after you've done anything and you submit their plans, but, um, based on the amount of work they, they suggested. Um, Maxi Jack suggested, and, and we reached out to them, and they were welcoming to, to see our plans ahead of time, so we could coordinate driveways and whatnot. Uh, while they were finishing up their, um, their design, so the, the driveway location. Uh, in orientation has been reviewed at a high level with them, we've just formally submitted our access permit to them, but it was discussed. Uh, we have a write-in, write-out on, um, on Milford Street, and then you have a full access on, on North Ave. And you'll notice the, uh, the internal roadway, it, it kinda bisects the property, the, the, really the main reason for that is based on the grade differential. Between the, between the site, we really had to divorce one site from the other to get the grades to work on, um, on site. So that's what drove the, drove the design, uh, this is in front of DOT now with a formal access permit app, application. But again, we do feel pretty comfortable with that based on our upfront conversations. Uh, there are forty-two parking spaces proposed, which is in full compliance with the zoning ordinance, it's thirty-nine, uh, that would be required. So we don't feel as though we're overparked, we're just meeting it with, with, uh, enough room to spare. Uh, twenty parking stalls to the left, uh, twenty-two to the, uh, to the right. We provided, uh, internal sidewalk, uh, sidewalks on site, just to make sure there was connectivity to, you know, from the parking lot to each building. But also from one building to the next, uh, to make sure we have sidewalks and, uh, proper grading for, uh, for same. Uh, we've also provided a sidewalk connection out to the, um, out to the street for a future connection to a sidewalk be, be put in there. And Gary can talk about that a little bit more in his, um, presentation, but that was a, a comment that came up in, um, uh, the peer reviews we received. You'll notice we have a dedicated trash enclosure, kinda bisecting the buildings, uh, these aren't heavy uses where you're gonna be generating a lot of trash. But we did wanna provide a, um, location for that fully, fully enclosed, uh, structure. Uh, dedicated loading area a- at that point as well, again, very low usage. Uh, there was a comment about having some of the pickup to be off-hours, which we don't have any, um, any issue at all with, and we'll respond to that. Uh, from a grading standpoint, I had mentioned earlier in the, in the presentation, but we set, uh, based on the grades, the bank's set at elevation three eighty-one. And the, uh, the retail building's about five feet or so lower, four and a half feet lower at three seventy-six point five. Just really to step those in between the, the, the site. We developed a fully, uh, compliant stormwater, uh, design on site. Essentially, it's comprised of two underground stormwater systems, uh, that are located in the, uh, parking lots on the southern side of the site. Uh, one for each building, and then we have an above, above-ground basin on the northern portion of the site behind the, behind the retail building. Um, I don't want to, uh, speak for your peer review engineer, but I believe the, the stormwater was, was commented as being appropriate. Uh, we'll have a couple of touch-up items to do, uh, but everything looked in line there. Uh, we did provide a full landscape.
How deep are those basins?
So the, um, the, not very, the, the, there's a chamber system on the, uh, the two, the two front ones, so they're typically thirty, thirty inches. Um, don't recall if we actually made one a little more shallow, but there's no more than thirty, you know, thirty inches, typically pretty shallow, and then the basin in the back. B, can take a quick look at it and let you know. Looks like it might be about three or so feet deep.
Any type of, um, guide rail proposed, I'm, I'm just concerned about the one on the driveway out.
Well, no, the driveway out, those are, those are underground, um, yeah, yeah, exactly, the, um, they're, they're under the parking lot. The, within the driveway, uh, we don't have a basin, uh, within the, the landscape areas outside of it. The basin's only behind that retail building in the back right, yes, you really don't have the ability to get back there with a, with a vehicle. Uh, we do have a, a, a guide rail, a guide rail on the internal access drive as you've got a, as a slopes down, so we did provide guide rail. There, wherever the slopes, uh, on site were, were grading down. Uh, we did provide a landscape plan, uh, the plan provides internal landscaping, perimeter landscaping. Um, really just trying to break up the masses of the parking lot, uh, we did receive a, uh, a comment, uh, trying to find some more native species. We will take a look at that, and when we re-submit plans to you, we'll try to swap out some of those, uh, plants that were recommended when we can. We have our landscape architect looking at that, uh, but if it's a change we can make, we will, if it's a change we can't make, we won't. Uh, but we should be able to switch some of those species, uh, some of those species out. We've provided a lighting plan along with the application as well, uh, twenty-foot high mounting, uh, mounting lights. Uh, it showed that the light levels are maintained on site, you know, with the exception of the driveways, which obviously you want to light for, for safety. But everywhere else, it's fully, fully contained, uh, one item that I will be changing out is I did not specify a, um. Uh, a decorative light, I did a traditional type of a, type of a commercial light, based on the flavor of some of the, um, the comments I heard. We're gonna switch that out with a decorative light, which is more consistent with the applicants, other projects in town, so, uh, that will be, uh, shown. It won't change the light levels, but just more of the, the aesthetics of, um, of everything. So that will be shown. It won't change the light levels, but just more of the, the aesthetics of, of everything. As was mentioned, we've received all of our peer review comments, which is, which was great. We've met with MDM and, and Bob and his team do, do a great job. So we've addressed, I believe, the majority of the comments, sort of the sidewalk connection, which we'll discuss in a moment. And then, then obviously with Jeff and Graves, they, they do a very thorough review. There weren't any red flags within the, the comments that we received there. Everything, again, I don't want to speak for them, but everything was very easily addressable and in line. So we wanted to get through this meeting, make sure if there are any other comments from the board and then give you one submittal back to not try to rush something in before, beforehand and have too much paper to look at. So with that, I can turn it over to traffic and then come back and talk site, or we can answer some site questions. It's whatever your preference. Or architecture, architecture, excuse me, architecture, whatever your preference is.
Let's deal with any site questions first.
Certainly.
Move on. Where's the snow removal?
If you go back, it's scattered throughout the site. If you go back a plan or two, you'll see that some of the hatched, yeah, there you go. Some of the hatched areas that shows, there it is, where some of the snow removal spots could, could be. Got some along the front, some along the, the back and in those internal islands.
I really don't have a lot of questions.
Bill, I, I got a couple if I can.
Sure.
Well, technically, and maybe we didn't, I thought we talked about this early on with Connor from your office, that this is going to require a stormwater permit as well. Mike, I mean, Jeff always, from Graves always rever, reviews that anyway. So it's really just a little bit of paperwork, but we'll have to have a separate decision on stormwater. We did, I did get an email from the health agent. Bill, and he would, they are going to submit their comments, but they couldn't get them in for tonight's meeting. I told them that there would be a follow up meeting. I was almost positive of that. And that we'll be getting some comments from them forthwith. And lastly, as you know, we got a letter from the conservation commission and I, I just wanted to.
I ain't got into that yet, Jack. We'll, we'll discuss that as soon as the attorney comes back up.
Oh, we have an attorney. Then I feel better. There are, there are attorneys. Yeah, because they're site questions and I thought they, a couple of them were, were relevant.
Yeah, I guess that we'll get to it when he comes back.
Perfectly. Yeah, just to, to expand and, and thanks for bringing that up. I actually meant to bring that up in my presentation, but I neglected to. So there's an onsite well and a septic system for this. We have done the septic testing with the, the board of health and we have a preliminary septic bleach field that's shown on the plans again behind the retail building. It's actually oversized based on the testing. We designed it before we did the testing. So we wanted, again, get past this hearing, make sure nothing was shifting or changing. We're going to make a formal submittal to the board of health for the, for the septic, septic system, which should be pretty benign. It's a very, very low usage for these, for these, these uses. And then relative to the, the stormwater application, again, apologies if we, if we missed out. We'll fill in the paperwork to do that. I don't think it would change the, the review results, but we will get that resubmitted in, in, and some apologies there.
Yeah, Jeff holds. Igual to that. As a matter of fact, I want to quickly go over Jeff's comments, just to make sure that we're all on the same page.
Yep.
All right, so I'm looking at Jeff's review of July eleventh. Talks about he received all the documents. I won't bore you with that. We'll go specifically to start with their comments. Some of the stuff is just going to be like, you know, simple corrections to the plans. I'm aware of that.
Yes, and we'll submit a formal response to comment here for the file.
Number one, talks about a proposed loading area at the trash enclosure. The loading area approaches into the Wesley, Western driveway. Whereas the memorandum issued by P S Atwood is requesting a waiver from the requirements of the loading space. G I understands the loading space on sheet C three oh one is for a short term occupancy. And the contents of the trash storage pain is being emptied. If G I has no issue with the location loads, are you all good with that?
I'm, Mr. Chairman, for the record, my name is Jeff Walsh. I'm with Graves Engineering, planning board's peer reviewer for civil matters. Yeah, I, I wanted to be, the board to be clear that the loading area showed on the plan was in fact solely for loading the dump, the, the trash truck, emptying the dumpsters, if you will. And there was no formal loading space like you would see elsewhere when you have a truck delivery for, for commercial type of deliveries and so forth. So I'm, I'm fine with what's being proposed. I wanted to make sure the board was clear on what the loading space as labeled on the plan represents.
You have a plan for a loading space or?
Yes, we don't have tenants at, at this point, so it really becomes operationally for who the, the tenant might be. But for this type of a use, it's, it's a very low loading for a small kind of retail like this. So we designate a spot where they could kind of.
Spain's office. It's mostly UPS trucks and stuff.
Are there any considerations for the tenants and the types of businesses that will?
Here, but I'd have to imagine they follow the zoning by law, right? To the market to whatever retail use would be underneath the, the by law. And I mean, the banks are whatever might be in there. Obviously, it wouldn't be a, a restaurant or something like that. That wouldn't, that wouldn't work there, but.
Yeah, we just encourage the applicant to consult the master, the master plan.
Yeah, obviously.
The types of businesses that the folks are looking for in the town.
Yes.
That's the purpose.
Yeah, and we do have a used table, so you guys can figure it out.
Exactly. But understood.
The very soon that, that low building isn't going to be any type of major retail operation that is going to require loading and unloading, because it doesn't look like you.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's fifty five hundred square feet, so it's, it's, it's small. You know, it isn't going to be something that you'd, you'd see it's got large turnover, large trucks coming or anything like that, typical mom and pop type stuff.
A little after like a store. We'll have to approve the use for that. We can address that. Sure.
How do you close this up on this plan? Now, look at this plan where the driveways are coming out. I hope you're going to station a police car and an ambulance there. Because when school lets out, like and if you're trying to get out on through sixteen, traffic is coming home, you better have the job getting out there.
Well, we'll, we'll be going over the traffic section shortly. So if you could hold your questions, but.
We, we can't hear you, right?
All right. Well, we'll eventually get to the traffic section. We're not there yet. So if you could hold your questions until we get to that point.
Like a septic questions, well, questions.
Well, you can bring those up now. You can bring those up now, because we're going over the site plan, Mr. Chair.
Real briefly, can we do public comments after the?
Yeah, why don't we hold all public comments till we get through what we're going through here? We might answer some of your questions along the way. So.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We'll try and make sure we talk louder. So all right, number three, sheet one oh one includes a leader note identifying that the existing tree along Milford Street is to remain and be protected. To avoid inadvertent removal of the tree, the same leader note needs to be included on sheet C two oh one. So you guys okay with that or?
So we're going to take a closer look at it to make sure that it actually, I think the comment was make sure it can be saved based on what's taken a look at it. If it cannot be saved, we'll make sure that we have the adequate number of street trees that meet the zoning ordinance. So that's one of the ones I wanted to look at closer.
Okay.
Cutting down right next to it.
Number four, shade trees are missing from the retail building's parking area.
We'll make sure that we add those in.
Okay. The plans need to include the address and telephone number. That's all.
Yep.
Basic. Sheet three oh one shows a proposed onsite sidewalk system terminating at the edge of a Milford Street vehicle traffic lane and proposes no pedestrian connection to the existing. Those Washington Street side.
Yeah, that's the one when we worked with DOT or we got DOT's plans. There's not a sidewalk proposed there. Now that this is proposed, they might add a section. We've provided something to connect to it and set our grades back far enough so the grades would work. So that would, I think would be part of the discussions with, with DOT. If they can get that into their set, we'll connect to it. But there wasn't, there wasn't anything proposed in that area on the DOT widening plans.
Yeah. I'm aware of that. That's why I'm kind of concerned about not having a sidewalk there, because you're going to be promoting walking traffic to that, that site.
Yeah, it would be our, our preference to have a small section. You can see where our sidewalk kicks out. There, there's really nothing to the right of it. There's, you know, there's, there's destinations on the, on the, on the left hand side. So we'll work with them to see if they can't add a section for us to connect into there, but we'd have to, we have to get there, there right away and all that. We have to talk to them.
By the next meeting?
We can reach out to, yeah, see you guys. That's a good question. When's the next meeting?
Well, we'll continue to April fifteenth unless, I mean, August fifteenth, unless you want, need us to extend it further out.
Yeah, we'd have feedback by then.
Okay. August nineteenth.
Yes, even better. Funny attention.
I want to move back to the tree real quick, just a question. Just reading the, the report and it says, it says that the tree should remain and should be protected, which is different than the language I heard from the applicant that says every effort should be made to try to protect it. Those are different.
We showed on the original plans that we were trying to save the tree, like it's. So the plan showed that, yeah, tree to be, tree to be protected. So we're, we're going to try to sit to protect it. I think that's where the genesis of the comment came from.
Well. Yeah, what, what I want to make clear is I just saw an inconsistency. I wanted to be very clear what the intention was. First of all, the, the demolition plan didn't call for saving the tree. And that's what one of the first guys on the job is going to do is look at that plan and that tree might come down if it's not so marked. Secondly, on the grading plan, there's an earth cut of one to three feet in the root zone. So, so the grading is not conducive to saving the tree is my point. Now, if the applicant's team can save the tree, I think that's a very big benefit, because a tree this large, it takes, as you know, many, many years to grow. And it's not, it just, even replacing with, say, three or four smaller ones, it's just a whole different look, if you will. I'm not advocating one way or the other. I'd recommend saving the tree. Other people may, may have opined about whether the tree should be saved or not. And again, I'd lean, I'd lean in that direction, but the, the information on the plans, I was concerned that the tree, one, could possibly inadvertently be cut down. And two, the grading was not supporting that the tree could even be saved, but yet the landscaping plan called for the tree to be saved.
It says it should not be cut down.
No, no, it's, it's nothing. It just, no, unfortunately.
I'm, I'm not aware of a regulation this is.
Historical started the trees on that list, yes.
But, I mean, certainly.
If I may, just to be clear, we, we were more willing to go through these line by line, but the, we did get this on Friday and.
If you want to just address his comments and we can come back on the, on the nineteenth and anything you haven't met, will there be a waiver request which require, require a vote? Or you've addressed the issue?
That's our intentions is to, is, is to basically fully review what was provided to us and provide supplemental plans and, and hopefully address all.
That's fine. If you'd rather do it that way, I'd like to hear from the traffic, the, the architect before we leave tonight.
Yeah, and then traffic. That's, that's where we're going to. I just wanted to be clear that.
And we I'm sure you're aware that we require drawings of what the building's going to look like and what the signage. You have to get signage approval before you put the sign up.
Yeah, we were looking for waivers of signage at this point. It's my understanding we go through building commissioner to do that with our signage.
We approved the, the sign itself. What it looks like. You don't just let anybody stick any, especially on that corner.
We typically condition that, that you can't open until the sign is, or, or you can't, you can't construct the sign until you get approval from the board.
Right.
You can have it one way or the other.
All right, so we're going to trust that you're going to go through with Jeff, all these issues, and we'll address them at the meeting on the nineteenth.
That was our intention tonight. Appreciate the courtesy. I just didn't want to.
So if you'd like to have your traffic guy.
Mister, Mister Jim, sorry to interrupt. I, I just wanted, we were on discussion of the pedestrian access and then we switched another topic. I'd just like to have a moment to state my concern with respect to the pedestrian access from a site plan reviewers' point of view. I understand the transportation review is also probably offering comments about that, but in my opinion, the intended use here of a bank might draw some local traffic, pedestrian traffic. The retail uses may as well draw pedestrian traffic. That's what they probably want to do. There is an existing sidewalk on the opposite side of North Avenue. And there's an existing sidewalk on the opposite side of Milford Avenue. And it's my opinion that there should be a sidewalk system on this project that connects to that existing sidewalk system to safely, as, as best you can for crossing these streets, bring pedestrians to and from the site. And, and I'm just concerned that if mass DOT is not proposing a sidewalk system here, then, then essentially there wouldn't be no direct access from the site to the existing sidewalk system. And we could discuss it further later, but I want the board to understand that, in my opinion, this is, this is probably the most important comment.
Well, that's why I asked them to talk to DOT, because I'll be honest with you. I'm not, and I'm not sure, I don't speak for the entire board. I speak for my own personal opinion. I mean, I've lived in this town my entire life. I know what that area is like. To me, it wouldn't be, it would be a major safety flaw for you guys to propose that building without some type of sidewalk. Either the state does it or you guys do it, but I, I agree that have people crossing the road and walking along the grass to get to this, this facility. I mean, is a danger waiting, waiting to happen.
Yeah, we're, I think we're on the same page. It benefits us. We, we want the sidewalk. However, when they're doing a project, we want it, and it's not like it costs a lot of money. We just want to make sure it's coordinated. We don't want to have to put something in.
Well, if you're trying, that's why I said if you come back on the nineteenth with an answer to that, that'd be wonderful.
We're, we're a hundred percent on the same page to talk to them.
And there are multiple ways to make the connection. It doesn't necessarily have to be only along Milford, Milford Street to the intersection of North Avenue.
It, it might be a much easier path on, on North Street.
Well, Bill, is, is there a proposed plan from DOT of any, anything at all of what they might be doing at that intersection?
I, I think there, there is some preliminary stuff.
It's preliminary. I, I can.
Yeah, actually, I, I'm going to be speaking to them tomorrow, because they're actually taking some property of mine. Having a domain, you know? Don't have a choice, but um, so I'll be speaking to them tomorrow anyhow.
Yeah, I think we all have the same, the same goal. We would like to see that. It's just a mechanism.
Well, it's going to make that property look a lot better too.
Yeah, yeah, we, we, we're, it makes sense.
Eric has a comment.
Hey, just real quick, with respect to pedestrian access on the site. Would it be under the purview of DOT to add like a pedestrian walk signal at that, that light at the intersection?
I think there already is a walk signal there.
Is there?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
I assume that's staying.
Yeah, I don't think anybody uses it, but.
And then the, the rest of Jeff's comments, great comments, we can easily address them, look at them, they have plenty of time to review to.
All right. Um, is there anything else you wanted to bring up?
No, thank you, Mister Chairman, I'm good.
Not a problem, um, so let's move on to traffic.
Thank you.
We were just going to do architecture real quick and then go to traffic, I feel like traffic is going to be a longer conversation, so I figured we'll go to that, architecture first.
We have a rendering, you know?
Yeah, we do. Keep going, yeah, it's like about four pages down. There we go.
There we go.
Can you bring that back out a little bit? There we go.
All right, uh, greetings, um, so for the record, my name is Axel Solberg, I'm the principal out of HFA's Franklin Office and the Architect of Record. So, as far as the form goes, it's pretty simple, uh, with the two building proposed development on the site, there's always a desire to establish a common theme, so it doesn't seem like there's a patchwork of different styles going on. So, both of the buildings are very functionally inspired by, uh, the, what's happening in the floor plan, one being retail, multi-tenant potentially, the other being bank, which will essentially loop into the discussion of retail here. So the function is very important for the, for the footprints, so they're rectangular efficient forms, and so to enable these buildings to blend into the local environment, we've chosen to use a vernacular style, which primarily consists of the fieldstone masonry at the base, flabbergiding, mixed in board and batten, shield and, um, shingle shakes for the upper areas of the pediments. And we're just talking about the bank building right now, but the same material palette is applied to the retail building. And then asphalt shingles for the roof itself. And, uh, given that this building, it has a very particular need for a corner entrance, that's why the massing has been cut back on the left side of the top-left elevation you see here, and then, of course, we're using a cantilevered structural framing system to build out the corner there to provide a canopy that shelters occupants from rain, snow, and ice. And, uh, the signage that's shown here is just proposed for illustrative purposes only, we don't yet have the actual proposed sign, so what you see here is just, um, design intent and, of course, the actual signage and um, areas, square footages, linear footage of the signs themselves would be submitted separately. If we can go to the next page, uh, you'll see the opposite two facades of that, oh, maybe that was the prior page. Go up one more. Oh, okay.
Yeah, it should be.
Oh, there, there we go, okay, so this is the backside of the building where you can see the drive-through. Um, a little bit less embellishment on this fight, on this facade, just given the backup house nature of it and the efficiency of the drive-through. So, um, but the architectural lighting on the exterior facade is intended to employ goose neck lights up top for downward illumination of the signs. And then we'll have decorative architectural wall sconces along the primary piers and the pilasters around the facades, just to add some texture and some scale to the, to the elevations. Uh, so now if we can cycle down to the next page. So this building, you can already tell just by looking at it, uses the same material palette. Now, this is the one which is intended to be potentially long-term multi-tenant, so with buildings like this, we're always striving for flexibility in the long term to increase the efficiency um, and the longevity of the systems that we use to construct it. And so what you'll see is a continuous ribbon of storefront, uh, the primary gable is, of course, intended to be the main sign feature, but you'll see two shed dormers flanking that on either side. Both intended to be potential homes for future tenant signs if and when that may become a reality. And the storefront system, the modular spacing of the units allows for future doors potentially to be inserted within the storefront uh, glazing bay system without requiring extensive adjustment to the building envelope, and we do that out of an, um, effort for sustainable design practices. Uh, if we can go to the backside elevations, which should be the next page, so you'll see this is a very, um, plain elevation here, but again, this is the backup house nature of the structure. Uh, we didn't want to just have a simple shed roof here, so of course we carried through the gable that you saw on the front entrance through to the back to add some more character and roof forms to the overall composition. Uh, the main egress points that you see back here are placeholders, we know that once the retail configuration is figured out, we'll have to figure out where those second and third means of egress are, and both of those would be proposed to have some sort of standing seam metal awning to provide, again, shelter from rain, snow, and ice. Um, similar light fixture palette, similar material palette, and, um, I believe in a nutshell, that encompasses the architectural composition. But happy to entertain any questions or go over any details that I didn't bring up.
I think they, uh, did you, uh, review the design guidance amendment?
Yes.
Okay, so, i- it, it looks like it's in line with the design guides that were, that were put in place, so I, I particularly don't take any issue. No, looks good.
It's good, great, all right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, and, uh, now we'll bring up Gary McNaughton from Bowman, uh, to go over the traffic.
All right. Thanks. All right, good evening, I'm Gary McNaughton with Bowman Consulting Group, uh, we performed the traffic study for the project. Uh, the study, um, as you know, you've already heard the description of the project, the site access will be a right-in, right-out driveway on Route sixteen. So that mitigates some of the concerns about left turns in and out, uh, you don't have that to, to worry about, and then the full access driveway on North Avenue. Uh, the study area included that intersection as well as the site driveway, so we looked at all three of those locations.
Just speak up a little bit so they can hear you.
Sure, trying to.
Yeah.
Um, so the, the traffic impact study, I don't know, you know, for those that aren't familiar with it, it was really the process of identifying what's happening out there, so we did traffic counts, counting how many cars are going through the intersection and turning each direction back in March of this year, uh, so we did a weekday count on a Thursday. And then we did a Saturday midday count, given the bank and retail use that can have some traffic during those, those Saturday peaks as well. What we see is that the peak in the morning is between seven and eight AM, the afternoon, it's between four thirty and five thirty. And then on Saturday, it's between eleven thirty and twelve thirty, and those are the time periods, those one-hour periods, you know, those busiest times within those peaks are the focus of what we study, so it's tends to be, you know, that you're looking at the busiest hour of the day, the rest of the day will work better than what you're seeing during those peak hours. We also do a field review, looking at existing lanewards, looking at site distance that's available at the proposed driveway locations, at the existing intersection, et cetera. We're collecting the traffic signal information for what's out there, this instance has been, has been discussed, there's a proposed project that I'll touch upon as well. Uh, and that project, um, you know, really a lot of the, that is driven by some of the crash data, the crash history at this intersection uh, is well above average and is a high crash location, which is one of the drivers for some of the roadway improvements that Mass DOT is doing. So, Mass DOT's project will be adding a lane, a left turn lane onto Route sixteen, so that those movements can be separated, controlled independently and operated more safely. They're also putting bicycle and pedestrian improvements, as they include on all of their projects. So there is a single pedestrian crossing, uh, of this intersection today, it is not accessible, there is no pedestrian ramp. You know, the, the equipment is not current, so that will be upgraded to be fully accessible. Uh, and as part of this project, and we've talked a lot about the sidewalk, there will need to be another crossing leg uh, to connect into this site, and that's something that we'll be coordinating with DOT on as they work their project. Um, and really, that's the, the, the sticking point of why we don't have something on the plan yet, we need to get a little further with DOT. Were able to submit the plan package with them, which was the request of them, you know, submit the plans, let them work with their designer to figure out what's the right configuration and the right timing for implementing a pedestrian connection here, and exactly how that will work, but it will be a fully accessible pedestrian crossing with pedestrian signal indications, um, adjacent to the site as well. Uh, when we look at, uh, the project, you know, I've talked about existing conditions, existing traffic volumes, we also project out to the future. Say, okay, you know, that's how things are working today, how are they going to work? Seven years from now is the, the standard forecast year, uh, with other projects that are going on and just general background growth. So we assume a percentage, it's one percent per year for background growth is what was applied in this project. There's also a couple of nearby projects, there's a forty-one thousand square foot commercial, uh, use, and then some age-restricted, uh, single-family homes that are being built, and then a potential uh, senior center, and all of those were added into that future traffic volume projections. Uh, we also look at what's the traffic going to be from this specific development, how much traffic is this going to, to develop?
Those are the numbers I want to hear.
Okay, so in the morning peak hour, you know, banks and retail aren't super busy, it's the total of thirty-seven trips, that's twenty-two cars going in, fifteen going out over the course of that one hour in the morning. In the afternoon, it's fifty-two coming in, fifty-three going out, almost the same number as, as on a site you stay on for a long time. And then on Saturday, it's forty-five entering, forty-six exiting.
That's just in the, the peak hours, right?
That's in the peak one hour.
Do you have a number for a daily, uh?
Uh, I don't have it in front of me, but it's usually, you know, about ten times that, so you're probably in the eight hundred to a thousand in the course of a day, and that's total in and out, so.
Right.
One car coming in and then going out gets counted twice.
Gotcha.
Um, and the other thing is that, you know, with the bank and with some of the retail, depending on what the end use is, you know, some of them tend to be pass-by trips, you know, you go to the bank as you're on the way to work, we didn't discount for that, we, there would be some discounting for that, but we didn't, um, take that into consideration, so we're a little conservative. Um, we then look at, okay, that's how many cars are going to come and go from the site, where are they going to come and go from? Uh, in this project, about sixty-five percent would be using Route sixteen, the other thirty-five percent would be using North Ave or Main Street, uh, which is consistent with the normal travel patterns in the area. So when you look at the existing intersection, uh, and the way that we, we summarize the operations for peak hours is level of service. And it's A through F, uh, similar to your grades in school, I would say there's two differences, one, you can get an E, and two, a D is actually pretty good in a lot of areas, so, uh, when we talk level of service A through F, this project currently, this intersection, um, is operating at a level of service D and E in the peak hours, um, so it's, you know, busy, a little bit beyond where you'd want it to be in terms of delay. Uh, with the DOT project in place, it's going to be improved to a level of service C and D, which is usually their target range for improvement projects. And then with this project added on top of it, there's no change in that level of service, so it stays a C and a D. Uh, when we look at the site drives and how the movements entering, exiting the site drive, uh, would operate, they end up operating at level of service B and C, so even a little bit better than what we're seeing on the main signalized intersection. Uh, we did also look at site distance to make sure that, you know, vehicles entering and exiting the site in particular can see far enough to see those approaching vehicles. They exceed all of the required, um, site distances for that. And then this did go back and forth with the peer reviewer, many of their comments were simply confirming the findings of our study and the methodology, they had asked for a couple of additional, um, plans to be developed, one of them was a site distance plan that's been, uh, included in the updated set. It's on the screen, and then a plan showing the deliveries, uh, delivery trucks coming in, and then a fire truck circulation plan, so those are all included.
Uh, right, I saw that, I think.
Yeah, and we got an updated, uh, review letter from them on Friday, I believe it came out, that, uh, had a couple of remaining issues, one, just recommendations to the board about conditions for timing of deliveries, um, so that's something for the board to consider in their, uh, decision. And then really the sidewalk, and they're, you know, similar to the, everybody else, I think.
Yeah, I'm, I'm pretty sure that's going to be a, a major sticking point.
Yep.
Is, uh, the sidewalk, whether you guys work it out with DOT, um, whatever. But, uh, yeah, there's something would need to be done there, just for.
And we agree, and there's multiple paths forward, it's just a question of which way does DOT prefer? And how exactly does that get, um, implemented into the project, and what's the timing for all of that, so?
So, just so everybody on the stands, we also, uh, the board has hired a peer reviewer for traffic, uh, is it MDM that we use?
Yes.
Yeah, and, um, they're reviewing it, looking at it from minutes, we've hired them.
And they're online, but, Bill.
Okay, um, do you have anything you want to add, or?
I, I can't answer that, Bob?
Sure, I, uh, thank you, Jack, uh, chair and board members, for the record, my name is Robert Micho, I'm the managing principal of MDM Transportation Consultants. Um, we were retained, uh, by the town to represent the town's interest in transportation matters. Um, and we've had the opportunity to look at the originally submitted materials, that's back from May thirty-first. Uh, not only the traffic report and its supporting information, but also the site plan as it existed at that time. Uh, issued our first round of comments in a letter dated to June twenty-first. Um, there was a response to that provided by the applicant's team, we've reviewed that updated information, reissued a second letter dated to July twelfth, that's Friday, as, uh, Gary McNaughton had just pointed out. Uh, and we're satisfied that in, in most cases, um, all of the questions or clarifying comments that we had issued have been properly addressed, really what remains are two principal issues, one, uh, more important than the other, uh, but, uh, the loading and access. Um, we want to make sure the board understands that, uh, for the retail entity in particular, that building, that you can certainly get a box truck or UPS vehicle into that parking field. Um, but there's really no easy way to get that vehicle back out into the circulating aisles and, and exiting the site without, without backing. Um, and I do notice on the current plan, uh, that there is a striped area of the parking field, and perhaps the applicant can clarify what that striped area is intended for, this is the, in the lower, uh, rightmost portion of the parking field for the retail building. Um, that type of a space could be used presumably, uh, for temporary, uh, parking of a loading vehicle. Um, and, um, I, I know that the modeling that they had provided to us, um, did not specifically call that out as a, an area that could be used for that purpose, but certainly, the, the intent of our comment was to advise the board that there should be a definitive protocol for how those deliveries occur and how that process works, so that you can avoid a situation where patrons may be parked in that main field. Uh, trying to, uh, you know, negotiate around, um, a larger vehicle that may be making a delivery, so that you, you really should consider a protocol that has either off-hours loading or provision where management could actively uh, manage how a space or series of spaces were used for that temporary loading activity during daytime hours. Right, so, so that's the, um, loading and access comment that we had, we think it's certainly solvable issue. Um, the second relates to this pedestrian issue, and it's really twofold, I appreciate the fact that the applicant is having these conversations with DOT. Um, I, I find it interesting that DOT didn't explicitly call out sidewalks as part of their improvement program. Um, in twenty eighteen, Mass DOT had undertaken a, a road safety audit of that intersection. And one of the recommendations and outcomes of that study was, um, specifically to include pedestrian crossings in each of the quadrants of the signalized intersection and sidewalks along all four quadrants of the intersection, so. Uh, I would have expected that the Mass DOT plans would, would identify, uh, those types of pedestrian elements in the plan. Um, I don't believe, based on my understanding, that this northeast quadrant of the intersection has any proposed sidewalk infrastructure, there's no proposed crossing at the signal. Um, the hope would be that those, in fact, get added to the plans that DOT has, that would certainly be in the spirit of their own study. Um, and it would certainly, um, provide a, a means of public access, pedestrian access to or from this property, I think it's absolutely, uh, imperative to have that kind of pedestrian accessibility to and from the site. Particularly from the standpoint of having a school just up the street, uh, where you could just draw a picture of, uh, you know, kids wanting to go to the retail entity before or after school, for instance, uh, uh, you know, not, not necessarily in a vehicle, but on foot. Um, so we're, we're hopeful that the applicant's, um, engagement with DOT is going to lead to a plan, um, presumably by, by DOT to incorporate those design elements into that longer-term, uh, improvement. To the extent that does not happen, it would be incumbent on the applicant to make sure that that infrastructure is in fact provided. Uh, so we look forward to, you know, the outcome of that conversation with DOT. Um, the other aspect of the common and pedestrian accessibility, um, and, and the access is. The common and pedestrian accessibility um and and the access is what happens even if DOT. Uh, includes those on their longer term improvement plan. What happens? Between the point where the site might become operational. And when those pedestrian features are actually built. Um, and and that's um, that's a gray area right now. Um, the state's project is not going to be initiated until. Twenty twenty five, and it's not likely that they'll be completed with those improvements uh. Uh, within, say, about a two and possibly a three year period of time. Uh, the tip funding. The tip funding for that is actually scheduled for twenty twenty five, which which means. The start gun, if you will, is twenty twenty five. That might mean that a contractor actually isn't even beginning their work until sometime. Uh, summer to late fall of that year. And then there's at least a two, two season construction period for those types of improvements. Uh, sorry, someone had a question? Okay, um, so this interim period is something that I think the board should be questioning, uh even if DOT. Agrees to put sidewalks and uh the timing of when those are will be in place is going to be important. And there may need to be an interim plan in which uh the applicant works collaboratively with DOT to make sure that the appropriate infrastructure is in place. Um, at the opening of their facility. Um, beyond that, we also have one last comment, and it has to do with, again, an interim condition. We want to make sure that um the the applicant's driveway. Um, if it is to be constructed prior to DOT's completion of project, that the board understands what that looks like. And uh that there's a reassurance that the sight lines and the in the grading and the areas around those access points. Remain free and clear of visual impediments, uh sight line impediments. So again, it's an interim. Condition scenario that we need a little more detail on to ensure that at day one opening that the site is safe, efficient, and pedestrian accessible. And that's the the gist of our comments.
Thank you.
Are you removing everything along uh sixteen uh Milford Street?
Try to follow the.
Well, right now there's growth along the side of the road. There's a stone wall there. Are you removing that? Are you?
So where, I'm not sure what DOT is doing. DOT is, I think they're relocating that wall as part of that. They'll be cleaning up all of that vegetation. They'll have to.
Yeah, once again, I understand his question, you know, with forwarding this over two or three year period, you know, if this opens next year. Um, we're gonna, you can't have sightlines. You're gonna have to cure those issues.
Correct, and they they do have the sightlines today. Those walls get moved back, so we don't anticipate any. You know, restrictions of it, but that's something that we'll be working with DOT to make sure they're not doing something.
Yeah, just for different, just we're gonna make a condition that just before you open that. You know, that's all taken care of because there's state sightline issues along the way. Um. All right, is it? Is that all you have or are we good?
Eric has a question, Bill.
Eric, go ahead.
Hey, guys, um, so. I don't know what, I don't know whether this question should be directed at our peer reviewer, the applicant, or uh. Even towards the the Mendon Police Department, but one of the things that I I consider whenever you have. You know, development like this that is uh, you know, kind of bridging two main roads. Uh, is was any consideration given in the the traffic impact study? Uh, for motorists that might be approaching along sixteen and seeking to bypass that intersection? In other words. Using the uh the driveway in between the two um buildings uh to to access North Ave?
Yeah, I I'm sure uh. Sure, there's can say hopefully there's consideration for that.
I think a couple of speed humps might work.
Yeah, I I can weigh in um on that a bit. Now, the analysis that was presented was done. To a good industry standard. We don't argue with that, but that same analysis also shows to your point that there's going to be some longer. Qs that develop along Route sixteen during particular hours of the day, but I think particularly in the evening hour. Um, that queue is going to regularly extend beyond uh where this driveway is. Um, the 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 question really relates to how much more convenient it would be to use the site. Uh, to bypass the signal to avoid that queue or minimize the delays associated with that queue. Uh, to get to North Avenue. Um. I don't anticipate that that would be a large uh number. But it certainly could happen, and um, one of the ways that you could uh. Mitigate that would be the provision of a speed hump. Uh, or those types of design features within the site itself. Um. I I don't believe, having looked at the applicant's material, that that's going to be a large number. Um. You know, the 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 vast majority of traffic that's traveling on Route sixteen is actually going through. Uh, that signal as opposed to turning onto North Avenue. Uh, and certainly some percentage of the North Avenue volume could use the site to bypass, but. From from a time savings perspective, when you look at the built environment, assuming all of the improved are done by a DOT, the the signals up upgraded. Um. I I don't believe there's going to be a large benefit uh that would drive that as being a really high volume cut through. Um, I think it may be used occasionally. For that purpose, and to the extent the board was concerned with that, and certainly would be in the best interest of the of the applicant. To avoid that from happening, that um, the 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 answer would be some kind of a speed hump assembly as a as a traffic calming element.
I would I would agree with with Bob and his points, you know, and we could raise that crosswalk to to have that. Elevated element to help slow that, so we'll.
Slowly turn in. Yeah, so people are less likely to use it.
Yeah, but it's, I agree, it's unlikely that it would be any high number of people.
Nah, there is a lot of traffic that turns right off of sixteen. Um.
Plus, they're gonna be putting a turning lane in there and everything. I really don't think they're gonna try to, yeah, try to run through a parking lot. And uh, I mean, they, even if you look at what happens over at. At um Charles River. I mean, you do get, I mean, I've seen people swing through there to try to beat the light, but. I mean, I don't think it's not, it's not a rat race, you know what I mean? Yeah.
In uh. My reference to the lack of a um. The right turn is in reference to other traffic studies that have been done there, and it's only like four percent of the traffic turns right on to to North Ave.
Um, yeah, and we have those volumes in here.
Yeah, yeah, it's 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 not a a extreme amount, but. I mean, there is going to be an impact, obviously, um, but. I don't think what we're looking at for businesses in that location and that the traffic count is going to be high. You know, that tends to not be the case. I mean, I. People don't realize, but you can take three hundred trips a day. And spread it across an entire day, and it affects hourly like. You know, thirty cars across an hour, which is like, you had one car every two minutes. And and that's generally what the impact is of this type of uh. Establishment. So I don't think you're gonna suddenly see major traffic jams in North Ave because this site is here. Um, Menon's gonna grow and there may be other items um that impact it. Certainly, if the senior center went in. Uh, that would probably be a greater impact. Um. It uh, you know, let's see. What's that?
Hello?
Because they wanted to put a senior center in a community center. So there's the, that's going to create probably more traffic than a retail. What's that? I ain't worried about the land. I'm worried about the traffic.
Hi, I'd like to ask a question if I may.
Can we?
Sure.
Hi, yes, I'd like to know what the calculated volume of the drive through is for this bank. Oh, I'm. Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Hazel Charles. Well, I live at four Hastings Street, so across the street from the Charles River Bank. So I am intimately familiar with the bank traffic and drive through traffic. And I'd like to know what your calculated volume of the drive through traffic per a twenty four hour period because they are used twenty four hours. Is also, um, I can say from. Uh, experience and observation that people often use the Charles River Bank parking lot as a cut through for the lights. And because I live across the street, I'm able to witness this pretty continually, and I'll mute myself here.
You guys want to answer that or?
Sure, I, well, I think as as I had stated, um, you know, in the overall trip gen, we did break that down in our report based on the retail use and the bank use. So there's about in the in the busiest hour, there's about twenty seven vehicles that come into the bank. You know, and and the exact breakdown I don't have in front of me of how many of those are using the drive through, but even if it's all twenty seven are you using the drive through, that's less than one every two minutes. So it's not a McDonald's drive through. It's not something that, you know, cranks out a ton of uh volume through it. They tend to be a little bit less intense. Um, you know, so that they're not backed up. I don't recall if this one has an ATM in one of those windows. That's the only way it would be used twenty four hours. Um, but you know, during the the busiest hours of the day, it's about twenty seven vehicles that would be coming total onsite.
I I should say in comment to that, that I would want to know if the ATM being proposed is a twenty four hour ATM. If the bank is asking for that because it makes a huge difference in quality of life for those of us who live. Within sight of this proposed project.
Again, it depends on the proposed center that goes in. We have an area for where that could be a possibility.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I'm not sure ATMs can be shut off. That's the question, can they? I don't know.
I don't believe that they can, and they certainly are not at Charles River Bank. Um, I have. You know, headlights in my front windows twenty four hours a day um from the use of the ATM.
Well, um. You know, that's certain some something we could probably get an answer for or.
We haven't studied that that area, so we're talking about a different location, different site, but uh. Uh, at this point, uh, we're looking for the possibility to have that. Okay, have that possibility. That's what the site. Okay, so. And. Happy to get into public comment. I would love to kind of finish the presentation if possible.
Yeah, actually, I'd like to hold off on any further public comment until we've gotten through all the uh items. I I appreciate your uh. Concerns, but I'll open it to public comment as soon as we're done. All right, where were we?
Uh, seeing if the board had any further questions on traffic from either.
Does board member, any board members have any more questions on traffic? Okay.
So we will be obviously submitting supplemental uh plans uh to talk about both the traffic and the engineering types of stuff.
Okay.
And we'll be talking mass DOT, so we'd be ready uh to respond to the pedestrian access aspect the next week.
Okay.
The only other item that I think we have left is the uh the COMCOM letter. Uh, it's the only other peer review that.
Yeah, that's, I was just gonna get to that. Now that you uh mention it, um. Obviously, you've seen it.
Yes.
Um, and uh. It uh. We talked about, they're talking about the low impact development in the uh design guide. It appears that you guys followed the design guide, so I don't think that's an issue. Um, uh, I'm not sure, uh, you met all the low impact uh requirements. But um, we do try on site plan to utilize low impact, uh, anything you can incorporate without. Um. Without uh. You know, dramatically having to change the project. I did have one question. Um. We got in the site plan and. Um, that shaded area up in the corner behind the build, uh, second building. What is, what is that purpose?
It it's just more for flow of traffic to. Consider it like a, like a lines of traffic nodes.
Let me ask you a question. Could you, could you push that out another ten feet? And make that the required delivering zone to that second building? Because I see you got a walkway there.
We. There's some um. There's some grade change there. Is what the uh, what the issue is. I I think the better solution for the for the delivery zone, I then I think. Bob had had mentioned that we do have a striped area on the bottom, right inside of.
Yeah, I see that.
So it's plenty of room for a box truck.
I just, I don't, I don't see, you know, Amazon and and UPS. We're going over and back. To unload. They're gonna stop in the middle of the parking lot, jump out, deliver their package.
I think that when they see that, I think that's actually when you're when you're looking to create some of the site, that's actually more convenient. Uh, up on the other side, that there's actually a set of stairs, you know, you follow that walk, you can go up a set of stairs to get to the um.
I see that, yeah.
The trash enclosure. So we we could do that. I just don't think it would be used as much as the other one.
Is that where the trash enclosure is?
Yeah, I see the uh, that little gray area. That's a, that's an enclosed. The purpose of that walk is just to kind of get up there and.
I got you.
With the loading area, we said, we think. Could work with that hatch down areas. I always like to hatch out one area. I hate having dead end parking. So I like to just have an area hatched out in case somebody goes. All the parking stalls are full. There's one area where they can turn around. That's the purpose of it. Which I don't think one use would include the other based on how few pieces and yeah, and how often the parking lot would be.
No, I mean, obviously, I'm, you know, uh. A fifty five hundred square foot building. I mean, I own a forty five hundred square foot building, and I get a UPS truck like maybe twice a week. You know, if it's, it's not like you're gonna suddenly.
We could frankly too, we could stripe it up, be closer to the building as opposed to on that backside. I could change the striping so it's earlier. If it'd be more conducive for them to go to it, I could actually stripe it to be on the building side.
Well, that might be a better idea.
That that probably is where you were going.
Yeah, instead of being, delivery guys don't want to be on the farthest corner of the the um.
Yeah, we'll do that.
Parking lot. All right, so back to the letter.
Yeah, can I comment on the letter, Bill?
Absolutely, Jack. Go ahead.
But, um. You know, I did think they brought up a couple of good things or uh. Bill was touching on this about low impact design. Why, why are you using all the rip rap? Is I got a hunch it's because of grading, but. As opposed to open design.
That's correct. It's grading. The slopes get steeper there. It's fine, it's sort of stabilized.
Um. I suspected that. Um, I also am going to encourage you again. That I think the use of native non invasive plantings is a very good choice. Of you to try to make every effort to do that. Every town I've ever worked in. Not only um chooses to do it, it's part of their bylaws. Now, I know we don't have that. But I'm gonna strongly urge you to go the extra effort on that um piece. And lastly, um, they bring up a very good point, and I know we don't have it in our bylaw. But the use of charging stations, I mean, in this day and age. I think uh it would be a good business model to put as many charging stations as you think is necessary. Um, it seems like uh, that seems the way the country is going.
Yeah. Uh, so to address this, the first comment uh is the last comment in Conservation Commission letter. Uh, we're, we are definitely going to be taking a look at uh. Change of landscape plan to include some of these native plantings. That'll be part of our filing. The one that's right above it concerning offering a vegetative management plan for the stone walls will also take a peek at that as well. Um, the EV charging stations, we obviously have to comply with the stretch code. Uh, we will be retrofitting. Uh. Those with, I think it's ten percent, so we have forty two parking spaces, so we'll be retrofitting for uh to be in compliance with the stretch code. And then the last comment that we haven't talked about is the uh, would we consider providing a parking for trail access to Buddy Brook North Conservation Area? My understanding, there's already parkable parking available for that area. Um, it's a liability issue for us. It's not something this time that we would. Interested.
I got you.
Consideration.
I understand.
Uh, but definitely with the uh, the native plants comments, uh, we we will heed to that uh. Recommendation to do our best with that, uh, and also putting together a vegetable management plan, and we are going to retrofit, apply the stretch code. apply the stretch code.
All right.
On the screen, Bill.
What's that?
Hand up on the screen.
Yeah, all right.
Just conservation.
Yes.
Hi, Carl Hummel, Conservation Commission Chair. Thank you for receiving our comments and giving us feedback on it. I wanted to make clear to the applicant and the planning board that we are not speaking, the Conservation Commission is not making review comments in terms of protecting natural resources in the Wetland Protection Act and the Mendon Bylaw. Instead, we are in a butter because this is a, we are adjacent or mostly adjacent to the Muddy Brook North Conservation Area. So we are concerned because of, we are downhill from this particular project, and we're happy to hear that the stormwater is being carefully reviewed and runoff going into our conservation area. And I'm glad that you're going to look seriously into preserving this, the stone wall, when, both when you're working and when the state comes in with their highway improvement project.
Thank you for your comments.
I think that's it. That's it. Any other public comment? I know you had some, some questions, questions we got in septic and well, you'd have to take to the board of health. Okay.
They can comment on runoff, they can comment on people walking on the sidewalk, they can comment on traffic. Then runoff comes down North Avenue, comes right by my house, which is more on a hole about that deep along my front yard, and then goes into the field and down. That's the drain system right at the moment. I know this because we've been, we've been there over 50 years. We've watched this happen.
Yeah, unfortunately, I don't think their project is going to impact that in any way.
No, because it's.
Comes from above.
Still gonna run into their project.
Yeah.
For the record, can I get his name and address?
Yeah, actually. Your name and address, sir?
Oh, Richard Chase, 9 North Avenue, posted above on the head side.
First time.
First house. After he tore down two beautiful old houses. But anyway, traffic, you don't get many kids walk because the parents pick your kids up and the school bus takes. Very seldom do you ever see a kid walking on the sidewalk. And there might be a couple of jobs during the day. But they cross over on the main street and they go up 16. They don't go down. Because if you go down, you're gonna run back up. And I don't do that.
Yeah, I know.
Well, traffic is, I know you guys have done studies, but I've lived there for over 50 years. So I don't need to do a study. In the morning, the parents bring the kids to school. It gets pretty crowded up there. So the school bus and the parents. In the afternoon, the school buses come and the parents come. Sometimes it's parking lots full and they park across and it's too.
Right.
Go get their kids. And that's the main course that they, they'll come across. The other thing, the trouble with the traffic lights is somebody knocks them down two or three times a year. They could have put the lights up.
Yeah, I believe in, I mean, I've lived here, I've lived here all my life too, Mr. Chase and.
I've lived here all my life, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Good point. Me either. But, but I've seen that light go down more than enough. But that's why we're hoping that the state's gonna end up taking care of that whole intersection.
But the other thing was, mentioned the senior center, you know, it's gonna be, that could voted down. Part of the reason people said was because there was too much traffic.
I, I think, I think it was a matter of people being too cheap, but that's my own opinion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And about how much bank traffic, how much traffic is coming in all of these places? Going to be a fast food place? Going to be someplace?
No, you can't move fast food. We don't have a use for fast food.
They wouldn't have a public water supply.
They wouldn't have public water supply. So it's mostly going to be some type of retail, some type of little store or lick, maybe a liquor store, or, but it's going to be probably similar to what you see up in the other plaza.
We've got woods, we've got.
Yeah.
My, my thing is, why do we need another bank? I got eight banks. And it's all money in a gut. I'm not.
Yeah, I, believe me, I.
Thing is.
I didn't think we had that much money amendment to have all these banks, but.
Third thing is, you've taken away from town. That was, when we moved there, it was a beautiful apple.
I worked on that apple.
Yeah. And it was beautiful in the spring. Then they cut all the trees and they, they didn't know what to do with the land. Then they were gonna put something else in, but they didn't have enough septic.
Well, the front corner is a different lot than the town property. The trees were on the town property and the town took those down, obviously because most of them were dying at the time, but. Yeah.
But the, the thing is, you are losing the characteristics of Linden as being a rural community. All we're turning into is a suburb. That's all.
Yeah, well.
For one reason, I can only go to one mall at a time.
Yeah. Unfortunately, like everybody else, like you have your property, you have a right to do with it what you like. The applicant has a right to do with this property. Within, the planning board's job is to make sure that they follow the zoning guidelines. And that's, if they do that, it's very difficult for a planning board to say no without putting the town in harm's way. We found that out without the adult entertainment by, by law that cost, I mean, well over a million dollars by the time we were done fighting that. So our obligation is to make them build what they're building within the construct of the Menon zoning body. And that's what we try and do. Excuse me, who is that? Could you move your, mute your?
Damon, I'm muting you.
I'm like, can only have so many things going on at one time.
One last thing.
Yeah.
I can sell water to them because I supply water to the circus because those wells are so full of rust.
Yeah.
They can clean them up.
Well, I'm sure they're probably putting in a new one by now, but I don't know. It's, but yeah, it, like I said, unfortunately, we don't govern. We govern location of the well, but we don't oversee the installation of well. That's board of health. Same with the septic. We view a location, determination, soil samples, stuff like that. But the ultimate resolve is with the plan, I mean, board of health.
Traffic, they've done traffic surveys. At this time, you don't want to try to go out of my driving.
Yeah, but I think, I think, believe me, I'm aware. I come down north half quite a bit. So I'm quite aware what the traffic can be like, especially at the time that schools getting out. But those are short periods of time during day, half an hour in the afternoon, half an hour in the morning. They're, you know, it's, it's not something that's going to encumber the traffic, the whole intersection for a long period of time. I mean, it moves out pretty quick. So.
Funny story, then we go, I looked out my front door one day and the traffic was stopped. It's colored like the sea up north. It was stopped down the intersection, it was stopped down 16, was fit both ways, would stop the main street. An oil truck was parked my neighbor's, by my neighbor's house. And the car was trying to make a turn into the back of the school. And the police had to show up to get this road blocked.
Oh, no kidding.
Yes. And I couldn't believe it.
Well, I think that overall, over the next couple of years, there's going to be some pains for the town amendment with construction and everything else going on with the reconstruction of Route 16, which, yeah, probably half of us probably won't be around before they done that project. But once again, the planning board has to take reasonable action. It, it can't just make things up and go off. It's got to follow the zoning bylaw and it's got to take reasonable action. If the board was to take unreasonable action, puts town in a situation where a lawsuit becomes prevalent. So we use our discretion. We've sat in front of many applicants and we've sat in front and we always, at the end, when we get done with these applications, we've always get the, been able to achieve getting these built the way the town voted. Town voted for these zoning bylaws. We make sure it meets the zoning bylaws. And we.
Was that not?
No, that's commercial. All of Route 16, the first 200 feet's commercial. Yeah, well, they're not going further than 200 feet, I don't believe. No. It's 200 feet deep. So meets the determination.
Got a hand up on the.
Go ahead.
Yes. Hi, are we in the, we are in the zone for public comment, correct?
Absolutely.
All right. So I live, as I said, I'm Hazel Charlesworth. I live at 4 Hastings Street. So right catty corner from this proposed development. And I have a couple just comments in relation to the zoning and, and so forth. The first being, due to the Mendon, Town of Mendon master plan, there is a lot of verbiage in there about the voters not wanting drive-throughs and not wanting increased traffic. And I don't believe that, having listened to this presentation, that the standards for moderating the traffic have been met. I, when you look at the retail building in the back, if you took the bank alone, I can see how you might say the standards have been met. But if you take the retail building in the rear of the lot, you do not know, we have no information as to the proposed uses of the retail building. It could be a daycare center where you would have massive pickup and drop off. I'm just, let me, let me finish, please.
Well, let me just explain one thing to you first. As the uses come in, they have to be approved by the planning board. They don't just get to stick anything they want.
Well, what I'm saying is that we're making assumptions that the proposed retail building will be light traffic. And we do not know this at this time. And so I think that the traffic planning is inadequate due to the fact that we have no information about how the retail building will be used. So that would be my first comment. My second comment is that the Charles River Bank has safety and security guidelines for the bank that they implement with lighting. So for instance, they do not turn lights off at 10:00 PM, only recently because I specifically petitioned them. They turned the parking lots off, parking lot lights off at 10:00 PM. But the folks talking about the design said that they would have 20-foot-high lights. And I would like a lot of assurance that all the current sign and lighting ordinances would be followed. I know that Charles River Bank was built before those were in place, so they don't have to adhere to them. But the illuminated signs in the Charles River Bank presents like a ridiculous amount of light, as does its other lighting features. But my concern is that with the bank here, how are they going to meet their safety and security guidelines and also follow the signage and lighting zoning plans for the Town of Mendon? And in the Town of Mendon master plan, dark skies and light pollution were seriously addressed in this plan. And, you know, you have things around that area, you have nature reserves, you have the Van der Sluys farm, things that would be affected by the light pollution of this area. Additionally, let's see, sorry. I had another point. Now I can't remember what it is. But I guess my concern is that the traffic is not adequately addressed. I think you're wearing rose-colored glasses if you think that they won't have massive traffic backups. My property itself is having a portion of it sort of eroded in the front to make way for sidewalks, which I'm happy about for the sidewalk aspect of it. But the DOT, I just spoke with this afternoon after reviewing the plans that they sent me for what they would be doing to my property. And I don't think that after reviewing their plans, they're not addressing volume. They're just addressing pedestrian access, turn lanes and whatnot. It's, it's not going to do anything. And if we add all this volume of retail and bank, which, I mean, as someone mentioned before, redundant bank, I don't think that the elementary traffic, the bank traffic, the drive-through traffic, the traffic from Charles River Bank, when you add that all up, it's not going to give you a net positive for this location.
Bill, I think that we've just been going, we're going on here. And this is something that I don't think this bank is going to be bringing much more traffic to this area. But I just think it's.
But you have retail space is what I'm trying to point out.
Retail space could be a dry cleaner that, that has 10 cars a day going there. You know.
Yeah, but you don't know that. Do you make an assumption?
You know what? We will know that. Ma'am, you don't, I don't know if you heard Bill say it, but we, when, if somebody's going to go in there and propose to put a dry cleaner, a, any type of thing, we, as the planning board, will be the ones that will decide whether that will be a fit for the corner and for the traffic and for everything there as it goes along.
Damon. Yeah, but we already have permitted things beyond.
Excuse me, hold on. I will call back on you. Let Jack come to speak to us.
You know, what we've done in the past, I'm going to strongly urge it with this, is that we'll have a condition on this that they have to identify their eventual tenants. And if those can conduct and give us assurances, which will verify with our traffic consultant, that it doesn't exceed their projections. If it does exceed their projections, they'll have to come back to the planning board and make any adjustments or, or, or not have that use. As far as the, the lighting on the bank, I think dark sky lighting is a mandate that the board's always done since I've been here. And if there's other accommodations, like shutting the lights off, perhaps we can ask the applicant about that as well.
Now I speak now.
Yes, excuse me.
So after reviewing the town's signage for commercial establishments, all signs are supposed to be like low wattage and also all bank, or sorry, not bank, but all commercial establishments are supposed to turn their lights off at 10 o'clock. And that isn't even followed now. So I have no confidence that these regulations will be enforced to this new venue.
Well, since I've been here, ma'am, and that's September, October 2021, that's not the case.
So you're saying that all business establishments turn their lights off at 10?
Ones that have been permitted by the board since 21. The board has no jurisdiction over businesses that, that were previously approved.
Well, obviously, yes. But I guess what I'm saying is that, like, I think that there are many variances that are given. So you have buildings that were approved before and they're grandfathered in. And then this bank is going to say, well, they have safety and security concerns. And they're going to ask for a variance. Then they're going to say, oh, well, we need be able to see to get into the drive-through. So they'll ask for a variance.
Well, they haven't asked that. They haven't asked that yet.
Okay.
I'm not projecting what they're asking for.
All right, I think we need to move on from this.
All right. Hold on, she's, Phil's speaking. Go ahead, finish your comment.
No, I'm fine with, I think my comments, the saliency has been made. I just, I disagree with this being a good, good fit for the corner.
I just want you to understand, Town Amendment, regardless of what, I, I wrote the master plan, basically. I mean, us and the master plan committee worked diligently for over a year to build that. Unfortunately, that has not been yet incorporated into the zoning bylaws. We're working on that right now, actually. But what, what regulates this right now is our current zoning bylaws. And our job as a planning board is to make sure that they adhere to them. Our job is not to go outside the scope of what the zoning bylaw says. That only gets down into trouble. And like I said previously, it's. it's exactly what happened with the Adult Entertainment Bylaw, poorly written by law that that cost the town a huge amount of money. Should have never been proposed. Um, but.
Sorry, I I don't mean to interrupt you, but it's just hard one.
Well, you, I understand that. But people get this idea that the uh, the planning board can hit a gavel and say no. That that's how the town gets through.
I'm, I do not have that idea. I'm simply saying that I don't think that the traffic, um, the traffic study met the standard um for what the traffic will be for this bank.
Well, and that's why we hire a peer reviewer that represents the community. Uh, and he lets us know whether there's a huge impact coming. And these are people, uh, M D M, who represents, has represented us on several, uh, is a very good firm. And.
No, I I don't agree that they are not a good firm. I'm just saying that because we don't know what the retail is going to add to the equation, it's an unknown. It's a, it's an X variable. So.
Right, but there's only twenty, there's only, there's only twenty parking spots there, and there's only two, you know, two of my handicap. Um, it's not going to be that big a huge impact. Either that, or people aren't going to have anywhere to back.
I guess I I'm thinking that what we are going to see when this has been completed and built is more intensive traffic.
Well, like I said, we we can set parameters, conditions, that if if it suddenly exceeds some great number, uh, we can bring them back in.
It, what it, how, how does one do that?
Well, we asked for a study to be done in, in, say, so many, like, three years. And and we look at what the true traffic implication of of this project is. And if it, if it's much greater than they originally anticipated, uh, we can work with them to rectify that issue, whether it's with the uses uh that we allow in that establishment. Or, um, you know, they'll have to make additional protocols to handle it.
And who would be the agency that enforces that?
Would be the planning boards.
Yeah, through the building commission.
Through the building commission.
If you do a study and you find that the traffic is exceeding the volume that they, you know, are allowed to have in that space, who then enforces the actual nuts and bolts of like changing the utility?
It would be the building department, and they're the zoning enforcement.
Okay, is there precedent for that? Have they ever done that before?
Absolutely. We've had several uh, mostly commercial entities that we've had to, as as a matter of fact, there are a couple going on right now, um, that we've had to uh pull zoning enforcement in and uh have them handle. So, yeah, it is, it's an active role.
Yeah, I guess my question would be, do you feel like it's been a successful intervention? Like, has that had a good effect?
Yeah, usually it is, it has rectified the situation. All right, um, I've got to move on from this topic. I've given you plenty of time to say a piece. Um, of course, I've got. We've got another meeting coming up uh on uh August nineteenth. Uh, we'll hopefully have some further answers. Uh, Mr. Chase.
Yeah. One last question. I'm going home, but I'm old and hot and tired.
We're all going home.
Can somebody get the school lights turned off at night?
Uh, you gotta, you gotta go to the building department.
Why are those lights out all night? It's costing the town money.
Yeah.
I says, because nobody wants to turn them on. They leave them on all night. If you put the bank lights on the corner, and the school lights there, I can run an extension court, and I never going to have to buy like.
Well, we can set, we we can set demands on um, on the parking lot lighting after a certain hour that that be shut off. Usually, security line along the building we allow, just uh, but that's usually down scope.
And what I would recommend is, um, if they read the memorandum and support, a lot of these questions, I've kind of addressed on what the project is, what it's going to do. So, if others have it, I think it's available on the website. Take a look at the memorandum I submitted. It provides real detail.
We have a copy there?
It's on the website.
It's on the website.
Public copies.
It takes care of it.
You know. It's also available at the planning board office.
Yeah. So, our understanding, we've got our marching orders uh in connection with providing additional plans to address the engineering, some traffic, things to adjust. Need to talk to Mass D O T. Um, we have conflict, we have several conflicts on the uh August nineteenth. Can we look at a date in September to continue this hearing soon?
Yeah, we could look at a date in September. Um, I mean, I was doing it the nineteenth August for you guys.
Yeah, we would be, obviously, like to do sooner or later, but we unfortunately have conflicts.
Yeah. All right, we can push it off till uh. It's going to be like this, the ninth.
No, sixteen.
We can change it. Well, that's, that's fine. If you want to do it to sixteen. September is because.
Good point.
Take a motion, I pretend you're a public hearing from one north of the office, September sixteenth, six P M.
All right, there's a motion. All right. I just want to make sure. Go ahead.
Yeah, so um, in in the interest of expediency for the applicant, my understanding is that they are requesting waivers for a fiscal impact assessment and community impact assessment uh for the the uh special permit. Rather than waiting until the continuance to indicate my my preference to see assessments for them, I thought I'd voice that tonight. Um, but given that the site's proximity to the the rural residential district, I'd be interested in seeing the fiscal impact assessment. But then also, with respect to the letter from conservation regarding low-impact development, I think it'd be worthwhile to get the community impact assessment. And perhaps there we could also incorporate some comments on lighting, in particular, uh, security lighting and timing. Um, that'd be my request, is that the the applicant uh submit both fiscal impact and community impact assessments.
With regard to the fiscal impact, uh, happy to basically submit uh what the net property tax revenues are going to be. This is not a housing project, so I'm not sure.
Uh, I. That should be adequate.
Uh, so we're happy to basically provide that. With regard to community impact assessment, if there's specific areas, that's a tremendous report to put together if we're doing it full-fledged. If there's specific questions or specific areas that you would like us to look at, uh, we'd be more than happy to, happy to kind of dwindle that down.
Um, Eric, was there anything in particular you were looking for answers on?
Well, I guess um conservation had identified um low-impact development um.
Well, that's part of site, that's part of site plan. Uh, yeah, we've already discussed that. They're going to look at that.
Okay.
That that's actually in the site plan, uh, zoning bylaws.
Um.
And then with respect to. Thing on that. So, uh, just about the conservation situation. I mean, we are, how far away, we were nowhere near Muddy Brook with this, with this project.
No, we, I mean, I don't think.
I know, I know the stone walls and everything, but I'm just saying, the conservation, oh, I know, they they, they are responsible for the conservation restrictions. Um, I get that. The town owns the land. But as long as, I mean, I don't really see anything major with conservation other than, you know, okay, the stone walls, but obviously, that would be the town. We we all want to see the stone wall.
I think we've pretty much addressed all those questions, Damon. And I, I don't think there's any uh, any issue here. But um, as far as a full-blown community impact assessment, um, generally, Eric, a project this size doesn't warrant a full-blown. If we have issues we want to, want to request of them, uh, we can do it within the public hearing. I always like to do everything within the public hearing, because then the community gets to see it. We're transparent. Um, so if you have outlined some, some questions you want answered to, you can even send them, send them to uh the attorney here.
Don't tell her.
Yep.
It'd be better, it'd be better, Bill, if he sent it to me or Dylan. Yep.
Put together what your feelings. I know I have some questions myself, um, some community impact questions, um. So put them together, send them to him, then we're going to address when we open the public hearing next month.
That's fair. Thank you.
Does that work for you, Eric?
Yeah, that's fine. Uh, Bill, just with respect to the the fiscal impact assessment, I know the the applicant mentioned that they'd be able to provide projections on tax revenue. I think the thing that I was more interested in uh was, under the bylaw, it uh provides for uh projections for impacts of proposed development on the values of adjoining properties. So, given the the proximity to the the rural residential, that that's kind of the one I was more interested in.
Given that we're not doing a multifamily, I just, I don't, I don't believe that this project calls for that that analysis. Given you what we believe the net profit and revenue is going to be for the town, I think is is adequate.
Um, I'd like to second Eric's request for that information. As as a property owner, it's it's close. But I'm very, I I, that's across the street. I I'd like to have that information. So it would be really helpful in an impact report.
Um, any other board members uh want to speak to it? Well, generally, these types of assessments come from major projects. Um, this, this, I don't think I would consider a major project. Um, so, uh.
But I.
A community impact, a community impact report.
Uh, Bill, maybe, maybe a a compromise of of what we consider an arm-length assessment by a a realtor, doesn't take a lot of work, and they can give you um a very uh detailed analysis without doing a total assessment. And Bill is right. These type of projects, this is a pretty small project in the scheme of things. I know it has an impact. I'm not diminishing that at all. But I think uh the applicant should be able to get a a letter from a realtor about uh impacts to neighborhoods with similar projects.
Jack, I would agree, that is sufficient.
She's going to run for the board next week. Um. The purpose of the fiscal impact statement is to, for us to engage a uh appraiser, to basically do the value. We can get a real estate agent to go out there and basically provide what they're best. We'll run cops and do the whole thing. But at the end of the day, this is a small project.
I, I, yeah, I, I.
We're happy to basically give you what we believe with, which is relevant, and I do believe it's relevant, is provide you what, what the the property tax is going to be, identify the.
Yeah, I mean, to be honest with you, I certainly, I myself would like to see those uh, those numbers of impact. Um, that's obviously important to the community. Um, it's uh, you know, I I always say this, um, you know, I I represent an entire community of six thousand people, not twenty or thirty people. I represent six thousand. So obviously, from a point of view of of a board, you have to take in consideration the fiscal impact for the community. And uh, I would like to see those numbers uh next time we get together. Uh, and.
And that tax revenue proceeds.
Yes, okay, yes.
Great, thank you.
Um, if if we can somehow get someone, Jack, maybe you can work on that, getting, uh, we'll call it peer review, getting someone to do some real estate numbers. I mean, this impacted, I don't think it's going to, I think there's, it's going to have a zero net effect.
I'm not arguing with that. I have no idea. But I, with due respect, Bill, I think they have to initiate it.
Uh, they, I mean. Come out of our pocket, we basically doing it. At that point, we'd want to hire our own appraiser. It's just not one of those projects.
I'm not asking for an appraiser. I never use the word appraiser, ever.
I think he was just going to have a real estate agent do some numbers, but.
If the board as a whole believes that that's something we need to do, we'll take it into consideration.
So I, I think in the absence of the reports and the requests, I think Jack struck a good compromise. I think it's middle ground, and it's fair to ask.
How many feet? How many feet do you want us to look out to?
I would just do flooding properties, really. I mean, I don't think that there's going to be a major uh, a major impact on houses three houses away. I I just don't think that's.
Fair enough. That's fine. If that's what I said, if it's, if it's something that this board strongly thinks that it makes sense for us to do, I'm happy.
I think uh, I think it goes a long way to common uh people in.
We're here to, to provide you guys with the most information that you legitimately want to see. So, that's fine.
Thank you.
All right. So I I need a motion. Um. You made the motion already, continue to August, uh, September sixteenth. All right. So we have a motion on the floor to, and we now have a second to uh, continue the meeting to September sixteenth at six P M. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye, Damon, aye.
Eric, aye.
All right, thanks for coming into our questions. Please send the Jack's report into us and.
See you on the sixteenth.
Thank you guys. Um, we have one more item on the, on the uh.
Did we, did we lose that one or?
What's that? Um, I don't know. Yeah. Oh, yes, we got this middle for thirty-five Cape Road. Uh, just let me, uh, can I view the, the form, uh?
Gail, what did you have for a hearing date for this? Okay.
What's the hearing date for Cape Road?
September, uh, no, that'll be August, uh.
Nineteen.
August.
Yeah.
Yeah, now.
Soon as possible, yeah, we can. Thank you.
So I hate to be a pain in the butt, but I'm I'm traveling for work.
Yeah, for this moment doing right now, thirty-five Cape.
One second, Eric, we'll get to it.
Sure.
Bill, so Eric, you're gone? Unavailable?
I'm, I'll be unavailable, yeah. I I anticipate I'll be on an airplane.
He's going to butter anyway, so he can't vote on it anyway.
Well.
Well, he has to. We're going to have to use the uh rule of necessity.
Yeah, so. Damon can't use the rule of necessity.
Special permit, it needs to reply as a vote of four.
So we'll need to have a different date.
Can we change the date?
When are you, when are you going and when you coming back?
Uh, I'm leaving the night of August nineteenth, and I'll be returning uh August night third.
How about the twenty-sixth?
Shouldn't be a problem.
How about?
Is that a Monday, Gail?
Yes.
What's the second week?
The twelfth, August twelfth.
You're around the twelfth, Eric?
Twelve works.
All right, let's do the twelve. Do the twelve. Uh, it looks like.
You'll need a motion on that, Bill.
Yeah, one second. I'm looking over the paperwork. Looks like they did it, uh. No, we've, we uh passed, we uh. Yeah. That was going to get messy. We're, things have been approved before. This is what happens half the time. All right. So I need a motion to set a public hearing date for September twelfth.
August twelfth.
Uh, August twelfth, excuse me, uh, at six P M.
Thirty-five Cape Road, public hearing, August twelfth, six P M.
Do I have a second? All those in favor? Aye.
I don't know if I can vote on that one.
Damon abstains?
Yeah, we know, because, yeah, you're going to have to abstain from that right now, Eric. We'll do, yeah, we'll do the rules of necessity to public hearing.
Right, we'll have some, I'll have some language you'll have to read for the record at that time, Eric.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Other than that, we have one more item. It's not on the agenda, but I would like to uh, I have something here for Gail. For those of you who don't know, this is Gail's last meeting. Um, she is retired.
Almost done.
The board here has uh, got your couple gifts here. Uh, I would take credit for picking this up.
Oh, thank you.
That is, that's a real plan. It's a real, they call it rain gardens.
Beautiful, thank you.
And this, on the planning board.
Thank you.
Oh, I just wanted to say, oh, we appreciate, uh, give me a hug, and I'm spending a long time.
Gail, thank you very much for your service.
Fifteen years, I have the twenty-five altogether. 15 years, I have 25 altogether.
Thank you, Gail. Gail, thanks for all you.
Gail, I'm sorry, I can't be there in person, but thank you for your service and I'll, I'll miss our phone calls.
I'm not giving out my personal phone.
Even if I just want to catch up on the grandkids?
Well, once again. Yeah, I got to give you this back. And this back. Usually walk off with a folder, but I'm going to leave it.
Yeah, I know.
As a matter of fact, the.
Barry, I'll second that. We'll still be here.
Yeah, that is a special plan, you see how it.
Second.
Um, and it tells you how to take care of it, so hopefully you get a green thumb. Because I don't, nothing is ever going to win you money.
Hey, Bill, can you pass that a vote?
Yeah, we need one more vote.
Eric Hodge, aye.
It was Barry and Jay seconded. It was all sort of.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye, 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 thank you, guys.
Aye.
Gail, talk to you soon, congratulations on your retirement.
Okay, thank you. Okay.